To order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, July 8th, 2024. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at Town Hall 1 Metcalf Square in Winthrop, Massachusetts. We are starting at 6:05 PM. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard? Yes, Ms. Lutteiri?
Yeah.
Ms. Martucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton?
Here.
Ms. Bari?
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ms. Leonard, can you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comment tonight and no visitors. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Lutteiri. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SPW 24-22 in the amount of $404,926.98?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 24-27 in the amount of $178,971.23?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pierinton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Can I have a motion for journal entry in the amount of $668,748.81?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Leonard?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pierinton. Can I have an explanation for the record?
This is to balance accounts that were negative. You're approving it because we had some salary lines that were moving to expense lines. So when you mix the two, you have to have your approval. So it's just balancing accounts that were in deficit.
Okay. Any other, any comment or questions? Hearing them. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the WHS Girls Soccer Car Wash? I'm going to do these two separate because they're two separate facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Martucci. Any comment or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any needs or abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. May I have a motion for the Winthrop School of Performing Arts Dance Recital? Use of the facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Or opposition? Hearing none. Motion passes. We do not have a subcommittee report tonight. We had to postpone the budget meeting. We do have superintendent's report.
We do. I put in your packet a copy of the reduced level service budget. So as you all recall, we had, you as a school committee, had approved the needs-based budget. And after, you know, a few months of working with the town council, we received our appropriation, which certainly didn't come close to the needs-based budget as we knew, and was actually $1,492,484 short of the level service budget that you had originally seen. So we had, as a school committee, discussed both the level service budget and the needs-based budget. Although you voted the needs-based budget, the allocation that we did receive from the town of $36,141,804 could not support the needs-based budget and in fact could not support a level service budget for the upcoming school year. Therefore, the $1,492,484 that we were short in a level service budget needed to be reduced from that level service budget to match the funding from the town. So in your packet, I put a copy of that budget for you and outlined under both expenses and salaries how those reductions were achieved. We talked a lot during previous school committee meetings about a plan for that. We certainly talked about the foresight that our school business manager, myself, and the school committee had back in January when we were looking at the financial stability of our community and how much money we sort of perceived that we may get in reality as opposed to the amount of money that we know we needed for our students to have an equitable education as compared to their peers, not only in surrounding communities but across the state of Massachusetts. So in that budget that I put in your packet, there's a comment line that in red, I outlined for you each line item that I reduced in order to match the town's allocation. As we talked about this back in January and as we internally talked about it at the administrative level, we, and I've expressed this before, started to look at the FY24 budget that we were working in as of last school year. During that time, knowing the fiscal sort of instability we were facing moving forward, we made some decisions not to spend money on certain items and to sort of hold off on buying anything that wasn't imperative with the intention of hopefully being able to offset any type of a devastating allocation. And so that came to fruition around April where we knew that the amount of money that was going to be available from the town was not going to meet even our level service budget. So in doing that, as we began to prepare for the FY25 budget, we had to look at what we had left in FY24 and be able to determine legally what we could prepay. And there are lots of rules and regulations from the state of Massachusetts as well as the federal government on what you can prepay and what you cannot. And it's mostly expenses. You cannot prepay anybody's salary for outside of a fiscal, one fiscal year into another, but you can prepay things like curriculum, some special education curriculum materials and supplies. So what you see in that adjusted budget is everything that we did prepay for FY25 using FY24 funds. It also included, we have, and I've talked about this in the past, we have some revolving accounts such as preschool tuition, the international student account where students come in from other countries and pay a tuition to go to school here. That doesn't sit in the school's actual budget. It sits in an outside revolving account. So we took a hard look at those revolving accounts to see the balances in those accounts and if there was any money in those accounts that we could also use to offset any deficit in FY25. So when we knew that our allocation was going to require us to come up with 1.4 million, a combination of prepaying from FY24, and I'm not going to use this term loosely because it's pretty factual, draining any outside accounts that we had or coming close to draining them, meaning if there was 20,000 in that account like there was, there was $20,879 in a homeless transportation revolving account. How did we get that money? That money came to us because the state reimbursed us at a very small amount of money for monies that we had spent last year on students who were homeless. And when they sent that money as a reimbursement to us, we put that in an account called the homeless transportation account. That money sits in that account for extraordinary expenses. You never know how many homeless students you're going to have, the cost of transportation going up. And we utilized that account throughout the past few years to offset the cost in a fiscal year for what we had budgeted for compared to what it costs. So if we had budgeted for 20 and it cost 30, we would go to that revolving account. And if there was $10,000 there, we would then transfer that 10,000 to the school's budget line to offset that. So we took a look at all of those accounts and for FY25, which we are now in, we looked at the balances in those accounts and we moved some salaries that we couldn't pay for in FY25 based on our allocation and our need to cut 1.4 million. And we tied those salaries to those outside accounts. So although they'll appear as money that's still sitting in the account from September when school starts, August 26th when school starts until June, those accounts will drain down to basically zero in some of them. Some of them may leave a little bit more money in them. Whether money is going to come back into those accounts or not during this FY25 school year is subject to the type of account it is. There may be some money coming back into the international student accounts. However, some of that money may have already been earmarked for a teacher's salary or an adjustment counselor's salary at the high school. So I think it's important for you to see that so that you can see how we manage to do that. I do think it's critical for people to understand that paying for something using FY24 funds means that that money is not sitting there in FY25 in a line item. So when we get to the end of FY25, the ability to prepay things for FY26 is highly unlikely. There will not be an ability for me to say again in January of FY25, gee, I'm forecasting a disaster for FY26, let me see how much money I have left in the FY25 budget. Because anything I prepaid, I had to actually go into the FY25 budget and take it out of that account so that it would balance. So if there was 25,000 in a transportation line and I was prepaying that, or 25,000 in an expense line that I was prepaying, I went back into that budget of FY25 and actually removed it. So that money doesn't exist in the FY25 budget. So there'd be no ability for me to prepay at the end of FY25. So I don't know if you have any questions on that, and if not, I'll move on to another subject.
So to clarify, when you present the FY26 budget, the level services budget is going to look bigger than the current budget because in order to have level services, these are things that you already paid for?
Correct. So that 1.4 million that I prepaid to balance us for FY25 needs to return to the base of the FY26 budget. Because although it doesn't appear in the FY25 budget, the only reason it doesn't appear is because we prepaid it. The services, the goods, the needs, the materials, the supplies, teachers' salaries that are tied to those revolving accounts are still going to be here in FY26. But it doesn't appear in the FY25 budget because it was prepaid out of FY24 funds. So there will be an additional 1.4 million tacked on to the FY26 budget above and beyond what you see as this reduced level service number. So the reduced level service number for FY25 is $36,141,804. What we had asked for a level service budget was $40,845,769,000. And then when you took the grant funding out of that, the total allocation that we actually asked for from the town for a level service budget was $37,634,288. We received $36,141,804, which is 1.4 and change less than what we actually needed. So now, does that make sense? Makes sense to me because I do it every day, but it may not make sense to all. I do think it was, this may be the first time that I've actually shared with the committee at a school committee meeting, the detail of the reductions that we have made to have a budget that is aligned with the town's allocation. I think it's very important to understand that a level service budget request, over the seven years that I have been here, I think there has only been two years that we have received that actual level service amount. Annually, it's typically between, I think I've said before, between 6 and $800,000 less. It has never been 1.4 million dollars less, but that is, you know, the fiscal status of our community. So now, as part of my superintendent's budget, we have spent an inordinate amount of time, and I've never had to do this before, predicting a year from now, so FY26. So typically, we start around December planning the budget for FY26. I think that my mindset in knowing that the outside revolving accounts that we have been able to use as sort of a stabilization account for the schools, if our budget were to run over or there was an extraordinary cost that we didn't anticipate, we've always been able to go to those outside accounts and ask to have money transferred back into the school budget. Now that I have taken a lot of money out of those outside accounts so that we could fund the FY25 budget, I have concern that FY26 without an override, and I've talked about this before, is going to result in disastrous cuts if there is no additional money coming towards the school beyond an average increase from the town of, prior to owning the benefits, it was typically around 800,000. After owning the benefits and having to feel the impact of the rise of benefits, it's about 250,000 to 400,000, and the town had given us a little extra towards the end. I'm very concerned about FY26. We have started conversation about an override. The school committee has agreed to that. I think the town council is well aware that we're going to be requesting an override to be put on the ballot. The next step in the process is how much money are you going to be requesting in that override? And it needs to be, it needs to be a figure that is explainable, tangible for people to see and understand how much money is needed to run FY26 and what is that going to get the school district if in fact there is an override of a certain amount of money? What is the school district going to receive? So we are meeting with PTO members and starting group sessions soon. We have done a lot of background work and reaching out to people to see who would be interested in being on a committee, to be able to understand and learn about an override and be educated about the override, what it is that we need and why we need it, frequently ask questions that go along with an override so that people who are helping support that and get that messaging out are all on the same page. So that's all in the process and we're moving forward with getting those groups solidified. In the meantime, I have to sit back and say, as the superintendent, along with our school business manager, if I were to open school tomorrow and it was FY26, what would that number be? And that's an incredibly difficult task because I don't know if the same people are going to be here. I don't know how much our needs are going to change. I have no idea if the town is going to have more money in its coffers to give us. If I were a betting person, based on history, I would say that that amount is not going to be much more than it's been in the past and may even be less. So how do you figure that out? One of the things you have to do is you have to look at the people who work in the district where about 85% salary and 15% expenses, which is a big, you know, delta. So with teachers and with ESPs and some of our other bargaining units, they have salaries and then they have salary scales that have steps on them and they have lanes on them. Lanes are unpredictable until about March of every school year, but steps are predictable. So I took it upon myself to take a look at where every single teacher in our school district, every single ESP, custodian, and secretary, those are all people that are on, that have the ability to move up a lane, sorry, move up a step until they max out of steps. So each different, each different unit has a salary scale that has a number of steps on it. For example, teachers have eight. And in some cases, depending upon your degree status, there may only be seven. So I had to actually look at everybody that's in the school's budget this year and see what step they were on and what lane, in what lane they were in, and move everybody who could move up a step, keep everybody who is on the top step where they are, and then add all of that up and predict what FY26 salaries would cost across the district in every unit. So I did that. And then on average with expenses, expenses are, again, only 15% of our budget. However, the expenses in a level service budget, in this reduced level service budget, the expenses for the school district this year were $15,893,857,000. We offset that by $1.7 million worth of grants and one-time costs. But the amount of money we're going to have for grants and one-time funding is going to be less than FY26 than it was this year because a lot of those offsets are not going to be available money next year because they were one-time amounts of money, amounts of cash that we took out of a revolving account. So I have to predict all of that, too. So reasonably, a 5% increase in expenses across the board is, would be a reasonable estimate. And I say that because insurance went up 9.5%. Xerox may only go up 2%. A, you know, curriculum platform that we're on, we've done a lot of three-year contracts with curriculum so we can actually go in and see what the percentage rate is, which is better than by doing curriculum contracts or other contracts for one year because you can kind of get a sense. But overall, it comes out to be about 5%. So I took all those figures and I looked at our original, I call it the OG FY25 level service budget, and I looked at the OG FY25 needs-based budget, and I put those sort of calculations and formulas in to predict an FY26 level service budget and an FY26 needs-based budget. And again, they're based on what we did for FY25. So our needs for FY26 may change. We don't know. However, I needed a starting point and a place to go. So just for general information, and I will, I wasn't planning to share this information. We did have a budget subcommittee planned that had to be canceled this afternoon, and we would have shared some of that information at the next school committee meeting. However, I think time-wise, we should at least have it on the table. So I'll give you this information verbally and then I'll follow it up by providing you with a spreadsheet so that you can see what I'm actually reading off. So all that said and done, over the past couple of weeks, and again, this is an estimate, okay? So the FY26 estimate going from the original level service budget to FY26, the total amount of the school's budget overall, what we would be asking from the town for an allocation would be $40,703,122. In terms of the allocation we received from the town this year, which was 37, I'm sorry, 36,141,804, that's a $4,561,317 increase. That is, and I'll just give you the salaries so that you can understand where this figure comes from. Staff salaries plus longevity in total comes out to $25,127,254. Of those staff salaries, I predict that we'll have $1,375,401 in entitlement grants that will be able to offset that number. So if the number is 25,127 and we have $1,375,000 in anticipated grants, the total I would need from the town just for salaries on a level service budget would be $23,751,853. So that's the salaries. When it comes to expenses, the total expenses, thinking about the FY25 original level service budget, the expenses for FY25 would have been $16,534,000. If you put a 5% amount on that, it comes up to $17,361,269. I anticipate a grant revenue offset for FY26 of $410,000. So the total amount I would need from the town, or we would need from the town for the expenses, is $16,951,269. When you combine those two, the total allocation from the town needed is that $40,703,122. So again, that's a level service for FY26 estimate based on the FY25 level service. However, I've added the steps, the actual steps of people who could move to make it a more realistic number. So then you have to talk about the needs-based budget. So the needs-based budget, the OG needs-based budget that we asked for, the allocation we asked for from the town to meet our needs-based budget was $38,727,288. However, during FY25 with a, with a needs-based budget, the amount of money we had for grant offsets was $2,136,880 for staff and $1,132,879 for expenses. So if you add those two to the $38,727, now you're coming in at, you know, a total school budget, needs-based budget at 41 and change. Now taking that number and predicting the same process for FY26, an FY26 estimated needs budget, jumping off the original needs-based budget of FY25 and adding people's steps and the 5%, et cetera, the need from the town of an allocation would be $41,723,143. That's a $5,581,339 increase from the allocation that we received this year. Same process. I think some of the, some of the key factors in the difference between the FY25 budget and the FY26 budget is we are going to have far less grant and revenue money to allocate towards the school's budget to offset the full, full cost of the school's budget. That's because we have drained those accounts and we have prepaid for a lot of items. So it's very hard to understand unless you have the piece of paper in front of you. Had I known we were going to go through all of this, I would have brought copies for everybody to do that, but I certainly can get those to you.
I think having these numbers, even hearing them, is appreciated as it is moving us along. On the $5.5 million increase, are you saying that that is with the reduction in grants?
So yes, so I predict that, so this, this year, what we're using, what we have for grant funding, offsetting salaries, we have the original, well, just talk about the, the level service budget. Actually, I'll talk about the reduced level service budget, what we have right now. We are using $2,122,602 worth of either grants or outside account revenues to offset the salaries. The total salaries in this school year's budget, after we reduced it by 1.4 million, is $24,128,250. We have $2,122,602 to offset that 24 million. So the money that we would need from the town for this year, which we have received, is $22,5648 just for salary. When you're looking at expenses, this year, the total expenses before we pay anything with grants is $15,893,857. This year, and this is where the largest hit is coming, we have $1,757,701 being used as either prepayments from FY24 or access to outside accounts for expenses. That money will, that prepayment money will not be there next year. So therefore, moving forward to FY26, where in FY25, we paid 1.7 million using outside accounts and offsets and grants for expenses, next year, I only predict 410,000. And where is that 410,000 coming from? That's the school lunch revolving account. So we charge all of the school, the contract and the payment for the school, people who make the lunches and deliver the lunches, and actually, this school year, we're also paying people who, recess monitors and whatnot that used to be in the regular school budget, we moved them out of the school budget. We re-titled their job. They are school lunch monitors. They will have a very specific job description around making sure kids eat their lunches and maintain those lunches within their gut while they're at recess. And that is how we can utilize the school lunch revolving account to offset those salaries. There will still be some, there will still be money in the school lunch revolving account next year. That outside account has money in it. The problem is it's significantly limited into how you can legally use that money. I would love to be able to take that money out to buy materials and supplies that aren't related to lunch, but that is against the law. We're not able to do that. So you see that significant reduction, we sort of used everything we can to get through FY25, knowing that FY26, a lot of those offsets are not knowing that FY twenty-six, a lot of those offsets are not going to be available to us. And that's what makes that number so much larger in FY twenty-six in terms of the allocation that we would need as a typical town allocation than, than the average year. And again, you know, past several years, during the pandemic, there was a lot of additional outside money that came into the, to the town for the schools to use, which allowed us not to have to go out for an override and ask folks to, to supplement the budget because that money was coming in from, from the state and from the federal government. And that money is now no longer coming in as well. So that's why there is such a significant jump. I hope that made sense.
Questions?
Yeah, it did, and thank you, and thank you for all of your hard work. This all sounds actually quite familiar because I feel like we went through a lot of this last, did three weeks ago. As I recall, where we were left three weeks ago was figuring out what the sort of number needs to be to ask for an override. And I'm just wondering, I'm getting a little concerned about timing here
Sure.
and process.
Sure.
This is something we're hoping, we have to go to the town council, we have to ask for a specific figure. It was my understanding that we, as a committee, were going to talk about that specific figure this evening, and I'm just wondering what's going on.
So I've done some of that, some of that work. So there's override calculators that you can use, that Dylan and I have looked at and that Sarah Johnson, who's the town CFO, has helped us with, looking at, at those calculators. And then taking a look at the calculator and seeing how long, if you went for a six point one million dollar override. So if you can see, we need, you know, four million, four plus, just to get through FY twenty-six. So if you ask for a, a four million dollar override, that's going to get you through FY twenty-six, but now in FY twenty-seven, you need more than four million. So when you, when you get an override, the money comes in, and I've learned this, if you get a six point one million dollar override, typically, of that six point one million dollars in year one, you allocate three point eight to the school's budget, and the rest goes in a stabilization fund. So it will help you in the second year, and that's how you stretch the years. After having some conversation today with Sarah, you know, a six point one million dollar override would certainly help us in FY twenty-six and may even get us through FY twenty-seven, but it will not get us through FY twenty-eight. So you're talking about six point one million. And, and Sarah's willing to come to a, a school committee meeting if we would like her to. She's very savvy with this. This is a wee bit outside my lane, but I have learned a lot about it. You know, it, the, the amount of money you would need for an override to carry you for five full years would be significantly higher than six million dollars.
Okay, so that's the first I've heard of a number of that significance? I thought we had been batting around like three or four million dollars for an override. So I, I guess I just feel like we're reaching a bit of a crisis point here. If this has to be on the ballot in November, we need to go to the town council and ask for an amount of money and...
We do. We are not, I, I would say it's not quite a crisis moment. I'd say that we are still working through the process. We are still, we, because we were anticipating, we have, we, we're in the discussion point. We're not, we're not at risk of not being able to get on the ballot. But we, but we do need to keep moving quickly, and we do need to keep moving this along.
So what is the plan to do that? When are we going to have an actual figure to be discussing as a committee? When are we going to make a decision about when to go to the town council?
So I've given you this information, so you have, and I'll give it to you in writing as well, which I had planned to do if we had a subcommittee meeting. I can give this to you so that the committee can take a look at what FY twenty-six is going to look like and then be able to, to say, oh, come up with a figure that you all think is going to be reasonable. I do think it's important to have some conversation amongst the committee, if not tonight, another night, about the appetite of the community. So a six point one million dollar override on an average home, and right now, the average home sale, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I have it in my brain, is about six hundred and eighty-eight thousand is the average home cost in Winthrop right now. So a six point one million dollar override, I believe, would be about a thousand and thirty-eight dollars per family. And I might even have it, have it with me. I actually have a calculator that, depending upon how much the committee decides to move forward with as a request, we'll be able to pop that into this formula that will say on the average household, this is what it will cost. Was I close? Yeah, I thought I was. Imagine that I have retained that. I think it's important, you know, I'd like a twenty-four million dollar override so I could breathe for the next, you know, five or six years. I think we have to be realistic as a committee, and this is just my suggestion. I certainly don't tell the committee what to do. But realistic, in, in, in the theory of what is the appetite of the community and what will the community afford? And if you put something on the ballot in November, we have an option of putting something, and it disastrously fails, you can go back on in the spring. But the education that's going to be taking place between now and November is super important, and if we have to continue to educate through the spring, you know, I think it's important for people to know if the override doesn't go through, what's going to happen? You know, and, and there, if you think about it, if we need four million to open the doors for FY twenty-six and we get nothing, and we're eighty-five percent salary and fifteen percent expense, take out the mandated things that we have to do, just do the math, it will be teachers. We are not, we are not a school district that has a lot of administration. We are not a school district that has a lot of fluff. And it come, it will come down to staffing. Because expenses, we're sort of bare-boned with our expenses now. And if it comes down to staffing, the impact is certainly class size, service, behavior management. I mean, I could give you a list of forty thousand things that will, will be the impact. And those are the things that are going to need to be communicated, you know, to the community.
These are the numbers that I've, I have felt that we have needed to understand in order to be able to, to vote on this. My concern with voting on something tonight is that we haven't had time to digest this.
But I'm still a little confused about what it is we're digesting.
What we're digesting is the understanding of what, of what this would be. These two numbers, the, the forty million, seven hundred and three thousand for the FY twenty-six year and the forty-one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand for the needs-based budget. So that's, but that's just for that budget. Now, what you're saying on top of that is, we need to figure out how much more we would want to go for.
To determine how long an override would last. And I think that's where some conversation perhaps with the town CFO, who actually can do those calculations, could tell us, you know, look, you're looking at eleven million if you want this to last for five years. And then the committee has to determine, is it realistic to go out to the town and ask for eleven million, which would be, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars on the average homeowner per year? Or is it more realistic to go for six and let them know that this is only going to keep us afloat for two years? But who knows what's going to happen in two years? Does the state come in with more funding? Are there more grants available? This, this override crisis in the state of Massachusetts is the largest, the largest amount ever of communities that are having to go for overrides. I'm calling it an educational pandemic. I probably should get the copyright for that and make some, as a little side hustle. But it is, it is an educational pandemic, and it's not specific to Winthrop. We're actually, I would say, one year ahead of the average. Because most people are going, went for overrides for this school year and have had devastating cuts. If you just watch the news or look at how many communities, I don't want to be part of that statistic, you know, moving forward. So I think knowing what's real, what, what's realistic in terms of what the appetite of the town may be to ask for is something that I think we should, after this discussion, maybe involve Sarah and say, hey, can you give us an understanding of what an eleven million dollar override would look like and how long that would last? Because I think we have to be realistic with the people in the community and say, a six million dollar override is going to last two years or three years, and an eleven million dollar override is going to last five.
No, I understand all of that. I'm just, I'm just honestly, just really getting quite nervous about the timing. That's my main concern at this point.
So, regarding timing, so what is the deadline to get something on the ballot? Not to put you on the spot, sir.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
The deadline to get something on a ballot is forty-five days prior to the election. But you're not wait forty-five days prior to the election because there's a lot of education involved. You know, Lisa, obviously, along with Dylan, has spent, and I'm sure Laurie too, has spent a tremendous amount of time on this. And if you're looking, going back to the one point four million that Lisa had to make decisions on for this year, you're looking at a lot of impact to technology and instructional materials, along with professional development. And I'm sure if you look at, um, out of, out of district tuitions, I'm sure all the circuit breaker money is gone too.
Correct. This is the first year that we have had to rely on incoming circuit breaker money to pay the bills for the school year that you're in. We reversed that curse, you know, and that was something that I will put on my resume because that was a big deal, and that's a Department of Revenue strong recommendation. Tough times mean tough measures. Shouldn't be something that you usually do, but at this point in time, we are relying on incoming circuit breaker money to pay this year's bills.
And like Lisa said too, when she, you know, she was talking about her predictions for twenty-six, but she's also making predictions for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, right?
Correct.
And, and just for citizens out there who happen to be watching, the easiest way to think about it is, on the average house, it's a hundred, roughly, a hundred and eighty-four dollars a million. So if there's two million dollar override, it's two times one eighty-five to the average taxpayer. If it's a five million dollar override, it's five times a hundred and eighty-five. And the needs-based, you know, is not aspirational. It's not like, oh, my goodness, this is like top of the sky. This is basically what I think most parents and citizens of the town would want for their children and community to, to offer for education. You know, she, it, it's incredible that the superintendent was able to pull off this reduction for fiscal twenty-five without really staff reductions. Now, there could have been retirements and stuff that wasn't filled, but there's no reductions here. But you're looking, and, and again, it's not a scare tactic because if nothing passes, are we going to have schools September twenty, twenty-five? Of course, we're going to, school's going to open, it's just going to be a different atmosphere.
Very different atmosphere, which, you know, just if you posted and about what's happening in other communities, when you reduce the number of people that are working in a school, and we're bare minimum, when you reduce that number and you increase class size, you're, you're moving to a process of just kind of herding people into a room to try to educate them, which causes a flight of teachers to leave, to go somewhere else that has a more manageable first grade class of, you know, twenty and not twenty-nine. Kindergarten classrooms of, you know, nineteen or twenty and not twenty-six. I mean, twenty-six kids and one teacher and lots of people needing to go to the bathroom is, is a disaster. And people, people will leave, and you're, we're seeing it, we're seeing, and the data to support that that is, that that is happening. It's, it's scary. And I've been very transparent about the budget, probably too transparent, I guess, I don't know. I feel like I, that it's such an open book, that anybody that would like to see this budget and would like to see those projec- projections, I welcome that. I, you know, I, we've put a lot of time into this. I'd love to, to sell this as a, as an item for people to actually read. But there is no, you know, and people oftentimes say, well, you know, you can get rid of an assistant principal. Okay, you can, but who's going to manage the discipline issues? When the class size rises, there's going to be more disciplinary issues in a classroom, more mental health issues of our students, more, as it is right now, where we struggle to meet the needs of all of our kids with the few adjustment counselors we have. You don't pay attention to kids in a class size of twenty-nine that used to be in a class size of twenty-three. Your problems and difficulties multiply and multiply and multiply. You know, and I'm, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but people do need to hear that.
Yeah, I, I just, so, but I, I guess my question, it's still the same question. At what point is this committee going to discuss a number figure to ask for, for an override? I, I thought it was happening this evening, so that's one...
Well, we are, we are having that discussion. We are not able to vote on a particular number, but this is, this is part of that discussion. This is why we have the numbers out here tonight.
But we, I don't really have the numbers out here. I have a sort of a six point one dollar figure being floated. Is that the number we're talking about?
I, I just gave that as an example.
Yeah, I think it's important that the superintendent is, and she says, she's going to, um, give us this information via an email. We're going to have a week, I'm, I'm hoping that the chair would consider a special meeting next Monday. The council meets next Tuesday. It would be nice, I think it would be really good to have also citizens to have the opportunity to weigh in if they'd like into further this discussion next week, and then possibly have a special meeting and, and come to a decision and then pass it on to the council. It's, it's going to be an educational process. The fact of the matter is, back in the oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, we had class sizes that were in the upper twenties. And, and we had an override in oh-nine that passed. And we've been able to stretch that override out for almost fifteen years now. Maybe the last four was helped along by COVID. But we stretched that farther than most communities have. Most communities have discussions at least, and probably put an override on the ballot for schools every five to seven years. We've been incredibly fortunate that we've been able to stretch it out this long, but, you know.
But the gap is wide during that timeframe. The gap of the amount of money that we need is wide.
The bad thing is that the, the, the gap expands.
I think to have a number, to, to, listening to what you have to say, to, for the school committee to be able to come up with a number that you want to put on a ballot, I need to be able to go back to Sarah and say, and I, I discussed these numbers with her today, and say, can you give me a number that will last two years, three years, four years, and five years? So what is that number that will take us? I know that, I know what the number is for one year, and it's the number I've just put in front of you.
Six point one million.
That's, that's one year. No, 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 the number that I, the number that I discussed earlier that I will put in front of you when I
Sure.
email these to you. Four, you know, four point five for a level service and five point five eight for a, a needs-based budget will get you through twenty-six. What number could, will get us through twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight? What number would get us to thirty? You know, and I think that number would go, you know, probably in year, to get us two years, it'd probably be, you know, six million, six point one million would be two, I think. Three years, probably seven million.
Probably a million and a half every, close to a million and a half additionally, yeah.
And Lisa said, you take a portion of it each, each year and put it in your stabilization, who's gaining interest, and you use it in the following year so you can stretch it. But how much you can put in is going to be dependent on how much you have in total.
Right.
So that's where the stretching happens.
I think part of the discussion is not that it's going to wind up, ultimately, it will be a final number. But I don't think right now the committee's looking to vote on a number because it's part of this whole educational community outreach. What's going to be palatable to voters, what's going to be affordable for voters? Because if, if the, the figures that come out is, hey, this is what three years might look like, this is what five years might look like, what seven years might look like, and we all think, oh, seven years, like that, that will at least, you know, it's less per year because you build interest, so that, that makes the most sense, let's go for that. And if people are like, no one's going to vote yes for that because nobody can afford it, then it's going to require the whole group, I guess, of the, the planning group, to look at different numbers. So I think it's going to be a, a range of numbers and for the, for the committee to discuss.
Does the town council have to have an actual number in order to approve
Yes.
it to go on if they do?
Yes, we're not going to change the number.
So I think that's important for the community, no, and also the school committee, no.
And again, the, the education's going to be ongoing, however long it's going to be. And, you know, you said that if, you know, you, I think it's this committee we were elected to do what we think was reasonable and correct for the school system. And, you know, can't be afraid to fail on a ballot. You don't want to put something like Lane just mentioned. You don't want to do something that's impalatable that you know is just not, have a chance, but you want to be realistic, but you want, you know, we're supposed to be the ones with the knowledge that can come up with this number. Most people don't have that knowledge and don't look at it like we look at these numbers every single day. You know, most people are going to say, you kidding me, that much money? But when you really look at it, like Lisa said, if you're looking at these numbers, looking at the budgets, looking at the future, and we can't predict, like Lisa said, maybe they change the, the formulas and we get more money.
Yeah, we get more money.
And maybe that's why you go for three years or two years.
That would stretch out a two-year or a three-year plan to five, you know, so all those kind of moving parts, yeah.
You take some of that into consideration.
When is the council's next meeting after this?
Tuesday night, a week from tomorrow.
After this.
August, not until August.
So I guess my question is really for you, Jim. What, what is our kind of game plan?
I would be cons, I, I am willing to consider a special meeting on Monday. I really want to have public input, understanding these numbers. And the reason why I say that is I know we've had public input all along, but we haven't had the higher numbers, the understanding of the budget and what it would actually look like, needs versus level services. And I want to hear from the public about what they, where, in what direction. And yes, we are the ultimately the committee, we represent, and we'll make that decision. But once we go to the town committee, that's it. So it's not like I can, it's not, if I, if we go to the town committee with a, the number that we would love to see, which would be, you know, a seven-year, five-year, seven-year fix, and then it's too high and all we're getting is pushback because of that. It's not like we can go back and change that. And if we go in too low, and now they're, they're not going to get all of the things that we've been talking about as far as a needs-based, then it's too low and we can't go back and say hi. So that's why I don't want to run... say hi. So that's why I don't wanna rush. I do wanna make this decision quickly. I don't wanna rush into making a decision when we're talking about such an important part of our future.
So what's the forum to hear from the public? Because, I mean, respectfully, everybody, we've been sitting here for two months talking about how we need to educate the public. We need to hear from the public. The public is not here because we haven't had, we haven't had one open meeting to talk about the override with the public. So I guess that's my question is, if we wanna hear from the public, we can't just say we wanna hear from the public.
We can have a public.
We have to make a forum or something.
Right. We can have a public forum. We, we, if we wanna have a special meeting on Monday, we can have a public forum to go along with that, which would give, you know, and notifications. And I don't know that we would have numbers necessarily to put out, but we, but we can at least talk to people, you know, we can advertise this as an opportunity to talk about the override and take public comment on that.
If, if the town council doesn't get the number by, for the meeting on Tuesday, what's the impact of that? Can it be?
It's, it's not, it's not an impact for the council. It's an impact to me for the community because, you know, we could say public forum, this and that, and I think it's great to have a public forum, but people, it, it's almost like kids doing a book report. Ninety percent of them do them at the, you know, the night before to do. People aren't gonna get into this until you start putting numbers out there. Once they know, hey, here is a number. It's gonna be X amount of million of dollars. It's gonna be six million or whatever it's gonna be. This is what it's gonna cost. This is what we're gonna get. And then the school committee has to, you know, live with that number and try to educate the people as to why. I, I don't, I mean, we have nobody here tonight, right? Not that everybody knew or not that people thought that this was gonna be a night to talk about this, but I think the majority of people in town are not surprised at, or have heard that we are talking about an override. It's been talked about on the council. It's been talked about in public forums before, and it's been talked about.
It's been talked about it with all the PTOs.
So it's not, you know, but people like Suzanne just said, they, they, you know, it's, they wanna know a number, right? Everybody wants to know the numbers.
Can the number be changed if, if the town council takes a vote on a number on Tuesday? Let's say they vote on a number, it's, throw a number out there, eight million. If we start getting feedback from the community knowing eight million is not gonna be realistic, can the school committee go back to the town council and ask for that number to be changed?
No, I don't think so. It's on the ballot, right?
No, it's not on the ballot yet. I, I, I would have to find out a hundred percent. I would say, yes, it could be changed. I would not.
Problems, once you start writing the ballot question.
Yes, I mean, as you get closer to the end of.
Because that's important.
Well, but that's also a can of worms. So that's why I feel like if, if we don't do this work now, the way we should be doing it, and come up with a number that we feel like we can defend, you know, this, I don't think you wanna leave people to be like, well, I would vote for it if it were two million dollars less. I mean, that becomes a nightmare.
Right. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for it that way. I'm asking for it more so if you, you put a number out there to get the council to, to vote that the, yes, they're gonna put something on the ballot. Can you increase that number if you want to, or can you decrease that number if you want to prior to going to the vote? If in fact, you start getting all kinds of feedback from the community that they're not gonna vote unless you put A, B, C, and D in there?
My feeling is probably the most prudent course of action is to start having public meetings like next week and plan to go to the town council in August.
You might need two weeks to post your forum.
And if we're not going to the town council next Tuesday, which I think probably does seem really rushed, then do a public meeting, basically use from mid-July to mid-August to educate the town on why we need an override and what kind of numbers we're talking about. Then you solicit feedback about, okay, this is what you're gonna get with five million dollars. This is what we could possibly get with eight. And then we do a listening session where people really get educated about what those, what that money would bring. Then we go to the town council and everybody knows, okay, we're going with X number. We've heard you, and this is the reason we're going with this number. And then, I mean, come September one, you have about sixty days. We only have about two months to do a kind of, I mean, this, this needs to be a campaign, right? I mean, overrides are campaigns. It needs to be like registered as a campaign. There need to be signs. There needs to be websites. This is a lot of work and we're running out of time.
You know, you have a couple of issues, right? You have, like you just said, July and August. Those are not months historically where people are gonna really be getting into override questions and numbers and this and that. They're on vacation. If you wait until school starts, now it's too late, right? So you have to, I mean, this is why we're elected, to make a decision. We, we're incredibly fortunate compared to some other communities because it is November. We're being extremely proactive about this. And the superintendent said, if we make a decision and, and it does not pan out, then we have another six months to rethink it and try to get something that will pan out in some way, shape, or form. But, you know, to think you're going to get, and, and, you know, and you said everything correctly, right? We're gonna have all these public forums. How many people do you think, and who's running all these public forums? How many people do you really think are gonna come to the public forums? And are they really gonna get interested in this in the middle of July and August? I mean, I think it's important, and I applaud the, the chair for, for, you know, looking out of the box to try to have a special meeting whenever it happens to be and to have a public forum. But to, to think as much riled up as we are about this and how important this is for the community, to think that you're gonna get a tremendous amount of involvement right now. Us, we're, we're limited in, in certain scope as to what we can and can't do. We can't go out and buy signs. We can't go out and ask for money and this and that, whatever. It is a campaign. And you hope that people will step up, step forward and, and try to get really involved and educated because it's, we've been talking about this for months now and we're still, we're, you know, trying to understand the numbers now. So to have more people that don't do this on a week-to-week basis, think that they're gonna understand these numbers overnight is, is ridiculous. So I think it's, it's hard. We're gonna have to make a tough decision and to come up with a number with the best information we have. Hopefully, we do get some correspondence in some way, shape, or form. I'm sure the transcript can do a little something that will help us, and I'm sure we could do something on CAT that will generate some, some comments and stuff. But ultimately, we're, we're gonna have to make a decision in a relatively quick manner. And it's not making the decision sporadically. We've been talking about this for months.
No, it's, it, it's not. And we have been, we have had discussions with people. I think, though, seeing the actual numbers, at least the budget numbers for the twenty, for the next fiscal year are gonna be significant. Do you feel that it, it is reasonable to have a special meeting, for us to have a special meeting on Tuesday? I mean, on Monday? And if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna vote that night, does that make sense? Because the reason would be so that we could have a number for the council.
I could, I can get, I can get numbers from Sarah. I think I need to ask the town CFO to give me a number for the one year, which I already know, and then show me something that will last us two years, three years, and four years. And I can put that in front of you. And then that number is really the number that the school committee should move forward because you know what it's gonna be, both based on a level service and a needs.
So you, you'd be talking about two different numbers going forward each year?
Yeah. So for a one year, I know you need four-point-five for a level service, and I know you need five-point-seven and change or whatever it is for, for a needs-based budget. If it's gonna last beyond two year, beyond one year, what is that number gonna be if we're going for the level service number? And what's it gonna be if we're going for the needs number that's gonna last us one to three years?
The thing that Sarah, the thing that Sarah will run will show you the recommendation of how much is put in the stabilization account, how much you're using that first year, and it shows you your balance for second year, how much you put in stabilization accounts. So you can see it laid out over a three-year period to say, this is what you need and this to get you through three. And then same things to go for four years.
She, she could probably get me that number very quickly in each one of those scenarios. And I think once you have that amount of money in front of you, then the committee can say, okay, realistically, twelve million dollars is not gonna fly no matter what. Take that off the table. We're not asking for that. We're not asking for nine million, but seven million, if that's what you decide is realistic. What is seven million gonna get? It's gonna get a level service plus the opportunity to add a few other things that we may want. And then determining what those few other things can come after you have the number ready to go. That's just, that's my mindset and my thinking.
And I would like to ask the council subcommittee on finance also to look at our finance policies because I think one of the biggest components of this is an education stabilization account. And maybe we look at the way we do free cash distribution and maybe we alter our policy so that the town can contribute to this educational stabilization. And that will adjust the numbers. Not a hell of a lot, but enough that.
No, and you have to have, you have to have that. If you have an override, you have to have the stabilization fund anyway, don't you?
Yep, yep.
But if the town is contributing free cash, then it's again, another place where Sarah would add in, this is the recommended that goes into stabilization. This is the assumed cash and cash.
Sarah's incredible, but it's all projections.
Right.
Anything could change, right? But, you know.
Yeah.
And it's revenue-based too for the town.
I would like to have Sarah come in and be able to talk to the committee. I think the committee, that would be useful for everybody to understand more deeply these numbers and what we're.
So if I ask her for that information, then I would ask her, if you have a special school committee meeting on Monday, could she attend that meeting? And I'll have those numbers obviously ahead of time because you'd need to pack it before that. So you'd have a scenario. Does that make sense?
And I don't think it would be prudent to have the special meeting unless we can have those numbers too.
Right.
Correct.
So I think it would, this Monday or the following Monday would hinge on getting those numbers.
Following Monday would be regular school committee meeting.
I think there should not be a reason why she can't have those numbers. I mean, what you did the first year, it's not, it's basically, not basic, but you're basically adding a million plus a year for each number. But, you know, I'm sure Sarah would wanna retweet that and look at it and take a good look at it. But I don't think it's unrealistic to think that she can't have those numbers.
So does the meeting have to be, the special meeting have to be this Monday, or can it wait till the following Monday if you're gonna bring the number to the town council in August versus Tues, by Tuesday? I think you have to decide that.
I think it would be good to have a special meeting next week because then we can say, this is a meeting to talk about the override, and you invite the public.
Because if you're waiting the following week, it's just a regular meeting anyway.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a forum. We can have public comment time.
Right, but no one comes. This is the thing I keep saying, no one comes to a meeting. Unless you advertise it as a special school committee meeting to talk about the override, no one will show up.
Send the messages and everything. People will, you know, if this is your chance to come, be heard and, you know, say it that way, and hopefully you get some people to show up.
I, I just think the optics of having a special meeting have a bit more punch than like just come to our regular school committee meeting where we're gonna do business and do warrants and all that stuff. I just think, in terms of what people wanna allot their time to, they wanna come to a meeting. They wanna know that it's gonna be solely devoted to the override. They wanna be able to talk. And again, just with time allotments, especially during the summer, that's just my two cents.
We can blast that out through email.
So that, we don't need to vote for that because that's not up, but we ensure that we can do that, ensure that we can have the special, that we will have the numbers, and then I can move forward with that. Any?
I just, I do think it's important that we know that by, you know, Wednesday morning, the latest, because I wanna be able to get it in the transcript, that there will be a special meeting, because this will be the only transcript you have a chance to get.
Agreed. My target would be to have that information by tomorrow.
Yes.
Because we also want, you're right, the transcript, and we also wanna be able to.
Post it.
Post it. I encourage people to come.
I was telling Laurie, she can take notes for me at the superintendent conference, which was part of my school committee meeting, to tell you that I would be gone from Monday through Thursday to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, amazing yearly conference where we learn so much. But Laurie will be there Monday through Thursday. Lisa will be there Tuesday through Thursday, which is just fine.
Okay. You have public relations. Do you wanna hold that?
Yeah. Do you, would you like me to go over it? Patty's gonna hand it to me because I've now. Oh, yeah, I, I can do personnel first.
Okay.
Appointment.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
No, we keep forgetting to take it off.
We do have some for next year, but.
Not for the next.
I'll bring them all.
Okay.
I'll wait till the end of the summer and bring all the ones that are running up.
Okay, very good. And then we are onto personnel, and I know we have a number of.
We do. So.
Resignations and postings.
We have the assistant principal of the middle school, Justine Franzies. We're so sorry to lose. We have advertised that. And those interviews are happening as we speak this week. A first grade teacher, Ms. Madeline Durkin, is moving on. Another, you know, huge loss. And one more with Matt Serino, the athletic director, has moved on to his home, which is Saugus for all the right family reasons. And we're, you know, wishing him the best of luck. He has left us cleaner than he found us. Lots of good coaching got him to do that, and he is available for whatever we need in the meantime. And a math teacher at the high school, Ms. Cassandra Payolino, is also moving on. So we have posted all of those positions. The athletic director, interviews are going on this week as well, so I'll be able to bring that back to our next normally scheduled school committee meeting. And that is all I have in terms of personnel. Now if I can find.
Okay, very good. We have no new or unfinished business, uh, that, which brings us to public relations.
Yeah, so I'll go through these as quick as I can. Vasili Seotis has been chosen as one of the two recipients for the MIAA Student Athlete of the Year. Each year, MIAA, with the support of the Aganis family, selects two recipients of the Harry Aganis Student Athlete of the Year. In addition to the congratulatory plaque, Vasili will receive a scholarship in the amount of fifteen-hundred dollars for future college expenses. I spoke to his dad, who was extremely proud, as we are, of Vasili. Winter High School was well represented in the Aganis All-Star Games last week. Athletes Grace Furiel and Reese Broden both participated in girls' basketball. Hannah Parka and Samantha Demento participated in lacrosse. Mateo Martinez participated in soccer, and Andrew Ferretta, George Galores, and Vasili Seotis in boys' basketball. Donovan Cassidy, Ryan Harris, and Alessio Marcocchio were selected to play in the All-Star Game at Manning Field with the best senior football players on the North Shore, winning the game for the South team. So congratulations to that particular group. We're also super proud of our first-year Pilot Ladies self-funded flag football championship. They were defeated, but they had a great season. Wanna give a special shout-out to Viking Pride Foundation, who funded the flag football program. We appreciate the support and generosity, as always, of the Viking Pride Foundation, whose mission continues to be to support the co-curricular activities of the winter public schools. They support athletics as well as academics, and we are incredibly grateful to them. Congratulations to Winter High School graduate Ellie O'Donnell, who competed in the regional gymnastics championship in Westford, Mass, soaring to a first-place finish in the vault with a score of nine-point-five-five. In addition to this accomplishment, she, of receiving a medal and a trophy, Ellie placed in multiple other events. She was a five-year varsity gymnast at Winter High School, receiving a waiver to complete, to compete in the eighth grade, and she was also the team captain. We're super proud of her. She is off to UNH next year, so all the best to her. And attention to Winter residents going into seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. The Winter Police Academy is still accepting applications for this year's academy. They can be found in the lobby of the police station. If you would like, my son participated in that program. It was awesome. He got a ton out of it. The relationships he built with the police department and some of the staff there was amazing and certainly helpful in terms of their presence in the community, reaching out to the kids. As always, the police department has steps up for us, so we appreciate that. And that is, I think, all I have.
Any other public relations?
I just wanted to say a thank you. I found out today that though, Winter High School has hired a Spanish teacher for next year.
Yes.
And it's something that I've been avidly watching, as you know, so I just wanted to congratulate our new Spanish teacher, but really to say a big thank you to you, Lisa, and to Principal Curly. I know that was a, a big effort to bring Spanish back
It was, was a big effort.
Middle school, so I, I really appreciate it. I just wanted to.
So it's coming, it's coming back for FY twenty-six through a collaboration with the Department of Education in their, they have a visa program that they can occasionally find a staff member who is willing to come back. I think it's important to know that that is not an added position or a new position. The way that position is being funded is a special education program that we had at the middle school was able to be combined at the high school just based on numbers. We were able to work the numbers so that the special ed teaching position and that particular person was moving on to another district anyway, so there was no layoff. But the, the funding of that Spanish position for next year is actually the special education teaching position that was in the budget. So it's not an additional position. And had it not been that position, I'm not sure what we were going to do with it because the site school surveys were very strong by the parents that they did not want to eliminate health and wellness. Mr. Curly wanted me to be pretty clear about that, that the parent response was that if we were to bring back Spanish, because health and wellness replaced Spanish when we couldn't find a Spanish teacher in the past few years. Parents are very happy with the health and wellness program that we're running. They find it valuable for the kids. The kids find it valuable. They screamed about that in this.